Let's start because it's now 10 to 4. And there are few things that I want to share with you, which might cost or take up 5 minutes, 10 minutes. And the rest is whether you want to stay and discuss further or want to go early. And the audience will decide that for me, right? We will stop when you feel that there is nothing useful that we are sharing, right? I thought... Ah, this is the slide I want. What do you want to discuss in this time? Under the broad heading of improving mental well-being as applied to the plantation sector and plantation sector families, but also to us as human beings in this room? Are there really practical, simple things that we can apply into our lives and make a difference? So the focus should be for the next 20, 30 minutes or 5 minutes on what's useful to take away? And thank you for moving in, right? And also perhaps applying in not just plantation sector, but in our neighborhoods as well. But there may be lessons for that sector overall that we can shift or focus into. So any suggestions on already? I would like to talk about such and such during this time slot. If there are no suggestions, then I still proceed. If there are suggestions, we take those and start being guided by the group right now. It's a large group, we should be sitting in a circle, you know, but let's do it this way. Any quick requests? Under the heading of mental well-being, let's talk about A or B or C. 5 seconds and no response, okay. Thank you, thank you. Got it, I'll repeat that. If people like the mic, please do give them the mic. But thank you so much. Stigma, stigma associated with the word "mental health." You're nicely fixing this into what I want to start with. So thank you very much because my next few slides will deal with that. Anything else? So then I will outline some things, which will conveniently address your thing along the way. May I have the next? Okay. Now the idea here is what can we apply, use in our own lives as well as in the sectors that you are in and with people that we associate with, et cetera, related to mental well-being? And when we say "mental health," as I have said here, the automatic connection is with mental disorder, mental illness, problems. There's another mental health. That other mental health is your and my and that other person who has a mental disorders' well-being. In other words, everybody's well-being, mental well-being. So we have these two overlapping ideas. You even, you can read my mind and thank you very much. And I want to enter this through this example. There are only four more slides. Rest is if you take things up and discuss. This is just to give you examples to understand this difference between case-based, individual problem, disorder, disease, mental distress versus everybody's mental well-being, right? And promoting mental well-being generally. And these are just two examples we will use, I will use and then you will build upon. Here's one. You know, I've just connected it to the plantation sector, but you can connect it to anywhere, right? Says, "I, you, there was this 17-year-old who is taking drugs. I want to help this chap, Pani. What can we do?" I ask you, right? Or another person asks about Vasanti. And she says that a parent there had told her about their 20-year-old daughter, not very different from the rest of Sri Lanka. Post-A-levels will not let go of a telephone, even for a few minutes. Now, question. How should we understand what has led to this current state of we know than Vasanti? And what is best to do about it? Next one. And here are the options. We are very quickly running out of slides. So you will then have to see what you say or think about what has been said so far. One is refer to a doctor or some other helper or counselor or get some specialized help so that we can get her treated or him treated or helped. The other is... Can we just go back to that previous? To work on the basis of the families and communities' understanding. What's happened to this kid, right? And try to work out from our understanding rather than the understanding of so-called experts or specialists or people with specialized knowledge who seem to know or claim to know better than us, right? So here are the two models. And the stigma you are referring to or you referred to earlier is associated with that first category. Namely, those who need the help of services, helping agencies, people who have problems or disorders. The other category is the... Let's, that's the one that we want to focus on, is on the mental health promotion approach, where we see, hey, what's going wrong with this person, which is no different from what's going wrong with me and my family and somebody else's? And whether it's individual, family, community, group, whatever? And see what can we do about it? How do we understand this, right? Rather than have somebody take over our control and power, right? Usually psychiatrists, psychologists, counselors and other alleged experts. I belong to one of those categories by profession. And there are times when it is appropriate to send people to me. Although I'm not seeing patients now, right? Where it is appropriate to send somebody to psychiatrists. So these are not either or either, but it's B, the second approach, that allows us room to do things ourselves. No, I think we are coming to the one before the last... Oh, no, three before the last one. I'm trying to give you an indication that you can leave the room very quickly, very soon, right? Depending on how far you take things. So here is, and you can take this discussion with me further, a list of targets, if you like, to which you can apply a health promotion approach. For example, if you say, "I want to improve child development in this state population." Now that's not a case-based or individual problem-based thing. It's not a disorder thing. But I want to improve child well-being in this population, right? Or to promote workplace well-being in the plantation sector, which you have been dealing with and discussing today at length, right? Now, my interest is at this little session to see, well, what can we start doing tomorrow? irrespective of whether we can mobilize other people to do things? Because we always have agendas, which are often prescriptions for other people. If they will do this, if only they will do this, right? Well, let's see what we can do. Or take a school that you know of or a school to which your child is going and the classroom there and what's the milieu there? If all the kids are into gaming on their phones, then your child will also be into gaming. And if it goes beyond a certain point, we will label my child as somebody who's incorrigible, impossible to change and needing specialist attention. But it's the whole classroom that is taking the kid there. There are things that you might want to discuss. What can we do with a classroom approach? With a society approach? And how can I, as an individual or three of us together as a group, start addressing those? And these are the other examples, right? So we can discuss any of these, as I've said, to elucidate principles of personal, like empowering ourselves, to take some action which we can assess as to whether it is useful or ditch if we find we can't think of anything that is useful for us to do ourselves. Choose what you want to talk about and we can discuss any of those to work out, you know, what's the approach here? And here you will have to make a choice, right? Personal mental well-being. Yours, mine, hers, his, everybody's, whatever. Or if you take a segment like children, elderly, blah, 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 blah. Or a setting. The others, some of these are settings and groups. A professional group, planters, some of whom were being referred to, right? Or any other subgroup, doctors and so on. So this is my introduction. Now you can take this agenda and go and think about it yourself or take up for discussion something you want to take up now. I wouldn't be upset if you all said, "Let's, I will think about this and do something with it." Or whoever wants to remain says, "Okay, let's work out some principles to guide my own action with my own family, with my neighborhood, with my group of friends and social circle." Tell me, thank you.
So I've been doing like, I have done more than 1,500 guidance and counseling on sexual abuse victims. The problem with when you focusing on a large group of people that you hope that you can change these people by any means. But the problem with it, like when you do a program, it's my numbers, the real numbers would be... It can be a very best program that you have designed. It can be some of the best motivation program. But the impact will last long for six to seven months. Soon as these people go to their normal environmental, there are social elements around them still influence them. So how, if you wish to come up with a big social change, how to maintain consistency for a long time of period? Like, I don't know how to do it, like, because I've been trying very hard, like, I have done more than 300 capacity building programs and school rapport because that's the main area that I'm focusing on, which is one of the root causes of sexual abuse. So we're trying to like balance both of these elements of it, but the impact is very, very less, even though if you try really, really hard, like. I believe in order to come up with a collective sustainable long-term solution, there should be more stakeholders should come in. Like it has to be a nation, attention towards some social problems, like, you can't change everything by yourself, right? Like you need a bunch of people, those who with same interests and creating an ecosystem would be a vital part of this initiative when you talk about mental health being. Because some of the things, especially in the plantation, are not considered as health. People don't believe that mental health is a health. Like I have, we had a discussion earlier, I have told the same thing, right? Soon as a kid got abused in the plantation, people believe getting into marriage is one of the sustainable solution for it. So there will be a suit of father comes into the picture and get married with this girl. So what we are doing here is we are making things worse. Like we don't understand, we don't empathize what she's going through. Like she's been going through a lot of anxiety, depression, whatever it is like. But this is how people desire, like. So how to like come up with a more collective sustainable solution?
That's a good example for us to use and talk about to illustrate some principles about what can you and I do. So we have one offer and I will try to make it more general so that it applies to all of us rather than just specifically the kinds of groups you're dealing with, right? Kinds of groups we may all encounter and to see generalizing from that subject about sexual abuse, other kinds of abuse and how do you, how do you reduce distress problems, disabilities, viciousness arising from it? Fine. And we will define the society or group and take up that issue unless we have... So that's, we can discuss 100 issues. That's what we will take up. Unless I have a different offer, then we will put both to you and choose. Thank you for one.
Professor, so with relation to the subject we are speaking today, I mean the entire subject matter. So you have different starters of people here. So you have at the bottom end, let's call them the beneficiary. Let's say it could be the children or the community. Then you have a few levels upwards. Influencers, changemakers, you know, maybe they say NGOs, partners, whatever. In such an ecosystem, I'm trying to relate it back. If I was an employee in a company, if my boss's mental well-being is bad, the way he treats me or, you know, the bottom end is impacted. So should, in a complex ecosystem like that, should the mental well-being whilst we rationally go and target the bottom, should we first target the top? A few individuals at the top? And convince them to believe in that concept and then you flow it out?
Thank you. So this is not a specific subject area that we are talking about, but about methodology and preferred strategy, right? Should we start with the top? Meaning the people with more authority. Let's say call them the top, right? And the people who as individuals have less authority. How do you deal with this complex setup? What's the starting point? Thank you. One more option and then we select. This is the last option. Then we start selecting from these three because of the constraint of time.
Whilst we're talking about the industry, most of the workforce is women and they are undergoing a lot of mental challenges, emotional issues. Their supervisors are always men. Only their colleagues are females. At home they are harassed, abused by the husband or other male relatives. So there is no support system to go to. So this is again about a methodology or even other organizations and the management can work together where there is a sounding board where these women can just go and share their problems because they are, like there is no female supervisor or anything like that. So it'd be good if you can, and all of us probably can come to a place where we work together that these women's stress is reduced because they already have sufficient stress at workplace, unsafe, unhealthy conditions, both in the field and in their homes. So in addition, other mental health issues also are affecting them. Thank you.
Shall I try to just take part of what you gave? Because you're, you're already asking, "How can we provide your preferred solution?" Which is to give us sounding board, give us setting where people can come and air their difficulties. Let's take the problem you identified, which is women in the plantation sector and maybe in other sectors being less powerful and therefore facing problems at work as well as at home and stop there and then see what do we do about it rather than also go for the, how to do the option that you prefer, right? So we have three options and we will now take one of these up, right? One is, let's make it more general now, about you are aware, right? And are interested in taking a classroom, school, community, village, estate population where there is a large prevalence of abuse, right? The first option. Now what do we do to set about making these problems less or making the impact of these problems less? I'm altering what you suggested to make it as general as possible. The second is, let's take an office, right? There's a office culture where the, should we start with the top or the bottom to make this a more healthy office culture? And what is unhealthy? That, let's say it's a very dominating administration and all employees are stressed out by the way... I'm not taking exactly what you said, but just trying to make it, right? By the way in which their superior level treats them. And then they are also unkind to the people who are less powerful. Not a nice culture, not a good place to work in, right? The third is... It's in a way a little bit similar to that, but not quite. Take a community, right? A community where it so happens that in that community, female workers as well as female members of the household are subject to what the observer sees as discrimination, suppression, harassment maybe, and are helpless. Take one of these and say, "We are talking about doing things ourselves, initiating things that we can initiate. Which of these do you want me to take up? 1, 2, 3?" Then we will work out, as I said... Ah, yeah. As I said, the, the principles in relation to whatever you choose. Those who prefer, and please vote for only one, those who prefer the first one, which is the prevalence of, or incidence of sexual abuse in a given setting, school, village, whatever, right? Those who want that as the example, please raise your hands. You, you don't want that either. 1, 2, 3, okay. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 for the first option. Second was about method, strategy, starting with the top or bottom in a hierarchical system which is oppressive. And how do you try to address and reduce the damage from this? Those who want that as the example, please raise your hands. Don't all, give 6 for each. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So at least now yours is out, right? But still, the, that one. The village, community, whatever setting, where the women were oppressed in their work as well as in their household. Those who want that as the example. 1, 2, 3, 4. So your option is what we are going to take, right? And we will do the others for like 2 minutes each, right? Or 3 minutes each. Shall we, shall I talk about the others for 2 or 3 minutes each? And then we'll discuss in depth, like 10 minutes or whatever time you want, this last option. If we had, if I had, say, a bunch of kids or school kids, right? Who are being abused or you know to be subject to abuse by some teacher, by the elders, older students in their school, the people selling various things outside, vendors, whoever, boys and girls both, right? One of the things that would, if I had that opportunity to deal with that school, for example, would be, how do I help the whole system tell each other, discuss with each other, define for each other, share? Machang, is there a problem? If so, what? Right? Machang is okay for you, right? If so, what? And what is the way to deal with this or to put that question to them in a way that they will be able to answer? So you might say, "I'm a teacher in that school." Now I'm making this up as we go along, right? "If you thought about this, you will come up with better solutions tomorrow." I will also. But I have to give the best I can find now. "I'm a teacher in that school and I know that kids are being molested and two or three girls have become pregnant, all kinds of harassments." Now I might say to these group, "You're all the students in this classroom, right?" Where the teacher knows people are being subject to harassment, abuse, whatever. I would say, "Please be the students." You know, now we have finished talking about photosynthesis. I would like you to tell me whether I should talk about some other subject tomorrow for 2 minutes. There are so many rumors about some of you being subject to... I would of course speak in the vernacular if they are, you know, being subject to all kinds of sexual harassment, other kinds of harassment, whether you like it or not. I want to see how I can work with you to make this less of a problem if you think it is a problem. Can you please talk to each other and tell me what you think tomorrow after I finish my biology period? And that I would leave it there. What are the principles here that I'm trying to, that I am following here? Is I'm, I'm going to partner them in finding the solution. I am not coming with solutions that I have, right? Two, I'm trying to initiate a process rather than to magically solve this, right? A process which is owned by the people who are being subject to the problem. And then I would come back the next day and see, you know... Now I'm trying to see, are these children taking it up? Now be the... Now be the kids, huh? Hey, you remember what I said yesterday? Has any one of you thought about this or talked to each other? And if so, is there anything you want to tell me before I leave at the end of today about that issue of harassment and molesting and so forth? Did any of you talk about this to anybody else? Okay, now there is silence, let's say, right? There is silence. So in my mind, I would be wondering, is there some kind of problem about not wanting to be identified, right? Not wanting to be identified? Or is this really not a problem? Although we, I thought so. Or whatever else, okay? So I'm already building hypotheses in my mind about why silence? So I must ask the person who informed me about this, you know, maybe you got it wrong kind of thing. I would, I'm not sure whether you are not interested in talking about this or it's not a problem. Can somebody tell me? It's not really a problem for you? If so, tell me. Ah, nobody is saying that either. Nobody is saying that either. Now talk about this tomorrow and see you all next week when I come. If there is a problem, why I be silent about it? Is it because I am alien and I am not a suitable person to talk about it? Or because somebody is threatening you or you don't want to stand out? I would like you in, you know, the groups that you are with, work out, is this a problem, right? And is there any way we can solve it? And come up with your solutions and I will not ask you for my, to answer me, but I will ask you to solve it and suggest things for you to solve it. I'm going to stop there on that example, right? But just to illustrate that my approach would be to hand it to this group, hand it to this group. So next time I would also see what other step can I take? Now it has become a public discussion among them. They are not sharing it with the teacher, but they are sharing it with each other, right? They don't have to tell it to me as the teacher. They are the best group to solve this. They are the best group to solve this. Interference by the teacher with the power and authority of the staff and so forth always leads to disempowerment of this group, right? So I would, that would be the line I would go with that classroom and that might be interesting to go right through, but let's take these, please be all women in a state area today now and I'm the CDO of that estate, right? Community Development Office, appear virtually, but she comes and meets people and runs the child welfare center where they come with parents and you want to raise this list. What do you think? What do you think? Now you don't always have to get a group together. You can start a conversation with one person, right? If you can be just for a minute, a lady who is working in the estate and she brings her child to my center, I am the Child Development Officer, right? And I take care of the kids and so forth. We'll give you a name, right? Menaka. Is there a Menaka here? Then we can't use that name, right? Okay. Menaka, this, here I have to use single or Tamil, but never mind. Menaka, this estate culture, right? They keep saying, we are being harassed as women. Now I am also a woman CDO, right? We are being harassed as women and at home we are stressed, at work we are stressed. How, how, how do you react to that? Think this is a correct expression of our lives? I'm harassed at home, I'm harassed in the workplace, powerless, subject to assault. I'm just wondering how correct this perception is? Transfer yourself to that role, then you can't answer this easily. If anybody who wants to try to answer that, be that person and try to answer. That particular individual may not feel the same way that the other one understand the situation.
Well, you have taken my mic, but I have got another one, right? Just try to answer as that person.
Why, I don't think that it is issue for me, for my understanding. I have never faced with such situation, the same example, maybe.
Okay, now that's, that's a response from one mother, right? But everybody is saying that, you know, that women are harassed, that we have trouble at home, we have trouble at work.
That may be the perception of that individual, say.
Okay. Now this will go in one track. Can somebody give a different answer opposite to this and I will see where it goes that way? Thank you.
I think that's partly how you could describe my life, but I don't want to define myself like that. Like I don't want to be that person and so I don't want to think about it all the time. So I just want to see what I can do and look at those things because I don't want to think about it too much. That's how it's been and how it's always been and it's probably not going to change. I can't change it. So I find it easier now to really talk about it too much and to just think about maybe the more positive things in my life, the ones where I have a little bit of my own decision and the things I can do. Like when I look after my children, I can be a good mom and that's what I'm focusing on.
Actually, I asked that because, Menaka, there are one or two estates I have heard about where the women have got together and addressed this, right? Without going to the authorities or waiting, so I have to report my husband to the police. But where they have started supporting each other in a very practical, creative way. That's really why I asked you. I wonder whether you want to talk to other people who are also silent perhaps because they feel helpless or it's better to be silent than to raise things and then come to a worse place, right? How can we do this and bring this up in a way that doesn't make things worse? I think that is the challenge. I would love to discuss that further. Once you talk to a few mothers, I will also raise this with some mothers and then see where we go. It's about a minute or two or actually I've exceeded the minutes, right? On one of the lines we can explore, right? Having facilitated these kinds of discussions, it's incredible the kinds of changes that the group is able to do when it is a group. And when it is a group that is on a constructive way forward rather than confrontational, where they manage to change the men but not by beating them, right? But by engaging them. Thank you. This is what I like, thank you. This is what we want, right? This is what we want. This sharing of different opinions. That is the process I was referring to with regard to the earlier ones, that the sharing of different opinions. Just shout loud and that might, that might, it might give in an answer, yeah?
Now we discuss about the same group sharing their views and they are trying to change the opponent or they are trying to understand situation and they change themselves rather than changing the opponent. Now will they succeed in changing the opponent or will they succeed in changing their understanding?
Thank you. We don't know where it's going to head. We don't know, right? This is a process that will take me three months. And each step is a slight improvement on the previous. And each one enables this group to take a little more control over their life. One of the aspects of control is understanding what's happening to us, right? Understanding our expectations and redefining realities. The only way to give those examples is by taking this forward and then you can extract the principles, right? I was pausing there because this again is a three-minute thing which, may I have the last slide after? Whatever we were going to, this is the last slide. I haven't forgotten yours, right? That's the bigger one. How can we decide on the changes we would like? That is what we want to stimulate in this group, in the collective, right? So there are different opinions, right? There are different opinion. And bringing those and sharing them to the point where people decide, are they, it's good if we can do such, wouldn't it be nice if we can? And then somebody says, no, that's silly. Then you leave it to them to sort it out and see which makes more sense. To decide on what the changes we want to see is the empowerment and to have it resonate through the other person agreeing with me. And that process is what I'm trying to just kind of point to, not go through now, because you really have to do this three-month, four-month thing. Others are also free to leave when they wish to, right? I know the time is past. We'll take this also in that short sort of thing. Let's say we have a terror boss and the hierarchy is also terrorizing each other. I'm going to the third example. Because that is the culture in this office. If you want to get things done, you have to scream. If you don't scream, the one who screams gets her or his work done by the subordinates and the one who doesn't, people ignore, right? So that is the culture. I can think of one of hundred ways of entering this, but the ultimate idea would be, can I go? Yes, would be to plant this seed, right? What changes would we like to see in this office, in this workplace? Whether it is plantation or in an office somewhere here, right? Then what are the ways to bring this about? I'll just give one example, right? Let's say I am sort of in the second rung or third rung in this office and I don't like this because I don't like to shout to other people, but other people shout at me. Because I don't shout, the people who are parallel to me are getting everything done and I'm always left without, I'm just making this up, right? Always my things get delayed, right? There's, there are three people who do some typing and so forth, but they always do the things that other people do or whatever. How do I plant that seed? This is a terrible way of running an office without becoming victimized. So I would see, how can I start thinking about a change while having tea or lunchtime and just, right? Like sharing with her. I wish, I wish we could have a setup where you don't have to shout to your subordinates and I don't have to shout, right? Or I don't want, that we don't get shouted at. I don't think that's possible here, do you? I'm not giving it to the whole office, I'm just talking to a cup of tea. Do you think it is possible here? That's not the main question, what can you add?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's a question.
What to do?
Must find a solution.
Yeah, I won't, I wouldn't press this any further, right? I will leave it there. I would leave it there and take it up. So you also feel the same, but you have never said it to me, even to me. Maybe many of these others also don't like this way of work. This is, this is not resonating as a real thing for me, so I can't get into it well, but we will try, right?
No, Machan, you know, no, we can't know this B word, I won't say. They never understand, no, you got to do like this, no. Otherwise the B word, they will never do anything, no. It's been like this from the beginning even, you know, that's how it is here. And if you don't do it, no, you won't get anything, no. I don't like it also. What to do, man?
Maybe you're right, Macha.
Getting something on the agenda. Very often when we see a problem that we want to address, we want to address it and solve it right away, right? The solution is to get things on the agenda, on a shared agenda that you then gradually build up and so on. Now the same things are possible within your household. When you go back home, that's the point I will end at, right? When you go back home, go back from here with the thought that here is the level of functioning in our family, in our household. It's fine, there's no problems, you are, you know, right? No big deal. But take it from me, it can be better, right? I don't think there is the perfect house.
I don't think there is the perfect household and that it is inhabited by you, right? There may be. So these are normal households with pluses and minuses. Take this and apply it to that, right? When you start applying this idea that things can improve and they don't have to be standard headline issues, is our sex life optimal in this household? Can it be better? Address that. Address that by starting the question, starting the question, right? And you might be surprised that two months later, things become more interesting. If I use the word interesting, right? Things become more interesting. Just be, should I lose my temper when I drive? The way I am losing my temper? No, just by asking this, I change from somebody who actually lost my, lost his temper at the way some people cut in and so forth to accepting it because my getting angry didn't actually change the world. So should we change the world or should we change ourselves? In this instance, I change myself. But the process and the initiation of the process is one big secret to improvement. And so on and so on and so forth. The same can be applied into all these settings and communities and child development centers and all of it that you're talking about. A little, small seed of change and then nurturing that and learning the strategies and the skills to mold it is not very complicated. Actually, not at all complicated, right? All we have to do is to drop the need to immediately produce results. If you stop that, then results will come. I think time may be up.